...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second motion?
Motion and second to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry.
Motion to approve the minutes of July 2nd. Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of July 2nd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry. General concerns. Anybody from the audience want to speak this morning? If not, we'll move on to 8:32. Mike's discussion, action of a private driveway. Got anything you want to say about that, Mike?
Well, I'm trying to put a driveway out of Kentucky Avenue, south of Timbers' mailbox, basically. When the county has their horse shift in the fairgrounds, right now John's, any service is bringing it out. He makes a big turn, comes into North Drive, makes a, comes down, makes a big turn in the field during the crop season, and gets stuck, turn and go back out, dumps and goes back out the same drive. What I'm trying to do is make a drive, like come up that gravel road, going north, just swing off gravel road, go along the edge of the ditch, dump his load and drive out, not have to turn. Which they tell me I gotta have your permission to put a second driveway in. The ditch is, excuse me, the ditch is darn near flat. And then he put rock in there to make it. Now they told me to put a tile in, but I don't know how or where to put a tile in because the engineers have a 15-inch tile, but theirs is not 15 inches of ditch. So I'm going to have to figure it out or what, but I don't know what to do. I'm trying to keep rotating the semi truck into cornfields all summer long because they're bringing out the stuff in the fall of year. I bring all the compost out the airport runway. They gotta do the same thing. I gotta go out in the field and turn and dump. And it'd be a lot easier with another driveway on that website.
I think our coach said you can only have one driveway every quarter mile. Is that a different one? Is that correct, Ben?
It's, it's one driveway for every 1,320 feet is what the county policy is regarding driveways, which would put Mike at the max with his three. As far as I know, we've never turned one down when they come in for a special request. And what he's, what he's asking and what, from what I gather, is for a semi to be able to pull in, dump a load of horse manure or compost without impacting the farm field to the extent that they are right now. I haven't been out there to review it as far as the driveway pipe. Dave does all of those. I, I don't usually look at those.
They were looking at it and they're saying, just trying to figure out. I don't know what to do. I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to help the county and the city to get rid of the stuff that they were accumulating. Yes, I'm getting a little bit of banged up, but is it worth the time and effort? No. Is it worth the expense? No. But yet, I'm trying to, you know, it's helping a little bit, that sandy hillside, to make it do it. So I'm, I'm working with it. Well, I'm trying to make it a little easier on the guys that are bringing it out. Because John gets paid by the county to haul it, clean up the racetrack down here, but he has no place to go with it. So I'm supplying him a period to get rid of it. But I'm trying to make it a little easier on him and easier on me too, in the long run.
Now, if we approve the driveway there, does it need to be a tube through there?
That's what they were talking about. I don't know what, I don't know how or where. That's why I have to, have to get transit out there to see how, how much depth and where we gotta go with it. Because they say it's, where I want to put it is not very, you could just darn near take a semi through there now. But it's soft. It needs rock put in there. By the time you bril up to the rock level of the gravel, yeah, you're gonna make a puddle on the north side of it unless you put some, some kind of tile in there. But I need some base in there because you're gonna try to bring an 80,000 pound truck in there and you can't drive across. I mean, they say cost, they say eight, nine inches in the field is dibs without having to come through a ditch bank all the time.
What do you think, Ben? Do you need a correction?
I, I got a question. Are we adding a driveway or just making a real wide one?
We'd be adding a driveway.
So it's more like you come in, loop in and come back out?
Yeah, we're just gonna make one, pull in, pull way back out so we don't have to turn the truck on the, because that field is so sandy right there, he darn near sinks out the side anyway.
So the, the reason that Mike had to come in today is because?
Yeah, because of the ordinance.
Because the county, it's against what the county policy is written right now, as far as one every 1,300 feet. I don't have a problem with adding another driveway for Mike. But I know we've run into plenty of locations where we put a driveway in without pipe and we end up ponding water on one side.
I'm not arguing about the pipe. I'm saying, we gotta, we gotta look at it, see where we're gonna go with it. And how far down the, south of the road until we get enough ditch to put the pipe in and heat the water going. I'm, I'm floating with that driveway. I'm just trying to get access in so we can come in and not turn the trucks because they say they're powering up trying to get through there. By the time you stop and make a U-turn up there, it's kind of tough.
That is all understandable, but biggest question probably is the depth of, the original depth of the right of way. Apparently, as Mike says, it's pretty flat.
It's pretty flat.
I'm sure it's supposed to have some, some depth.
I'm su, I'm sure it's been graded at one time and the water is supposed to flow one way or the other. Probably hasn't been cleaned in a while.
That, yeah.
For 25 years or better.
So, I, I, and I don't remember, is this a county construct or is this an owner construct?
Uh, John Warren is agreeable to bring out the rock and dump it so he can get easier access to it. So all we gotta do is basically, the county's, all we gotta do is an approval. I gotta buy a tile, figure out what size tile you want to put in. I'll buy the tile for whatever it has to be. And the rock and stuff will be, we'll, we'll dump it in, get, get everything, the base put in. But to meet the specifications that you guys need, John's willing to work with me on it because they say it's gonna benefit him. It's gonna, uh, everything down the road. So he's, he's got gravel and, and scrap concrete, I guess, from hog slap that comes out all, he has to haul away all the time. It's perfect for him just to take it right up there, a mile away and dump it.
I feel very good. That'll be me.
I'll make a motion to approve the additional driveway for Senator Johnson.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion second to approve additional driveway for Mike as requested. My question before we vote, does that require a permit?
There, there is a permit. Uh, Dave's got it there. Basically, if you guys approve it, you would sign it as more approved on today's day.
Well, and make sure that, I'm sure Dave will do this, the depth of the tube.
Right.
So we don't have that confusion because it's.
Well, I, I don't know. I'm willing to move it.
But that ditch doesn't have much depth to it regardless.
That's what I'm saying is where we're gonna have to go, whether we're gonna have to get something, uh, uh.
We'd have that discussion. We know that these ditches are filled in, but is there proper depth? And I know Mike already brought that up. What's the depth of installation of the culvert?
Dave's done that in the past where he's dug down with a spade or driven a hub down to what the clay line is. Basically, that's what.
Well, either the clay line and/or there should be an actual more scientific, you know, grade. You know, and I know this also hinges on when it, when is that ditch gonna be cleaned out if, if ever.
Right.
So that we don't have the, the issue of.
Well, say, I don't, I don't know what, that part I'm trying to get stuff started. Uh, this wet spring has been, John's now got about 60 ton of.
Yeah.
Stuff up here at his place. He doesn't want it there.
No.
And I saw it all summer long out there in the field, but it's been so wet. And it, with, if you end up coming in that field right there, that North Drive, he's had trucks stuck in there because there is a wet spot about 50, 60 feet inside, so when he makes a big swing to turn, he has to drive right to that wet spot. Well, this way he would eliminate that problem.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the second driveway request from Mike. Other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry. Ben, you're up.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
County engineer approved contracts and bonds for Ruggis Brothers.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Got two things on the agenda for today. Uh, the first is to approve the contract and bonds for, uh, Ruggis Brothers for them three projects that we had bid letting for here two weeks ago, I believe. This is for the project in Weaver Township, Norway Township, and Vernon Township for $317,393.50.
Joey, I have a motion to approve the contracts and bonds I presented. We had quite a discussion about this when they were left.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, contracts and bonds for Ruggis Brothers for $317,393.50.
I'll second that.
The motion second to approve the bidding contract for the project as just stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry.
Second item that I have is change order number three for the C-49 paving, project LB-19-1. Uh, this is the pavement smoothness incentive. This is for, I believe, $61,000.
$450.
$61,450.
That's what we pay them if you do a good job, right?
Yeah.
So it says something per DOT specification. Who actually determines that that is smooth?
Uh, they run the entire road with a, uh, profilograph. Basically, it's a, it's a digital meter that measures the number of bumps or the roughness index per, uh, lineal foot. And then based on what that reading is per station, there's either a payout or there's no pay or there's a deduct if it's really rough.
So the DOT does this with this little machine, if you will.
Right.
And then gives you the information?
Yep. And then we've got the, the detailed documentation for this entire project, both lane miles, as far as what your roughness index is. Uh, I don't know if you've been down to it and driven it yet.
Have not yet.
Uh, they, basically, they did this with a, a 93% smoothness. So.
Are you pretty agreeable with the report you got and what you physically have seen?
It's, it's very smooth. The only place that we had to do any kind of grinding on this job was right in front of Joel Wilson's house, the mail areas, and that was because we got caught with a storm where it blew off the burlap that they had covered and left some water marks from the rain. So they had to grind 150 feet right there. It had nothing to do with smoothness. That was basically just to get us back our, our, uh, um, our roughness.
Surface.
Our texture.
Pass that. You're pretty agreeable to the DOT's smoothness report?
Yeah. Pass that. I'm agreeable to the DOT's report.
Make a motion to approve the extra work order number three for Manhattan, $61,450.
Second that.
A motion and second to approve the work order number three to Matt for the construction of $61,450. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Before we leave this, Ben, I had somebody who works out there at the cemetery complaining a little bit. I don't know what they do about it. Evidently, the cemetery had a big dirt pile there. And my dad hauled it away and now they, I don't know what the problem is. What, what's the concern?
They had a, they had, they had a small pile of dirt on the driveway just west of the cemetery. Uh, we used that small pile of dirt with the loads of dirt that we hauled in where we removed the asphalt that was off the edge of the roadway. Uh, we still have to seed the grass, or seed the dirt, but I think that's what we have left. And what they were asking is if we could bring back a half load of dirt to pile out there uh, so that they can fill in rodent holes and those spots in the cemetery, which we don't have a problem with. The only thing that we asked is if they could find a spot on private property somewhere to pile the dirt. Because where they've got it creates an issue for snow as well as it's an obstruction in the right of way for somebody to hit.
That's what their complaint was. They said they're gonna take up another burial plot to pile the dirt. I'm just passing along what I heard.
Right. And, and we've, I guess the last conversation that, that our office had with, with them was, we're fine with bringing you a half load of dirt. We'd just like to have.
Yeah, that makes sense. Can't have it in the right of way.
Right.
Okay.
It's just an obstruction.
Especially now that we're aware of it.
Right.
Anything else for us this morning, Ben?
I believe that's all that I have. We, uh, we've got our flag poles up. I need to get with you and, and get, uh, flags for them. And then if the lights have come in yet, I don't know.
Haven't come in yet, as I've seen.
Okay.
I got a caller today anyway, so I'll call her after a while.
Okay.
Find you. I'll get you flags.
You spoke with Ben about Iowa Select, the line in driveway state.
Yeah. When, uh, they come in for an application, they were saying that if you would put a lathe or something out there on the driveway and give them an elevation, that's where they'll put it.
Uh, top. Is this for the Texas Finisher Farm that you're talking about?
Uh, all of the Iowa Select.
All of the Iowa Select.
Yeah, they, they want a stake with an elevation for their tubes, like the pipes.
Getting back to that driveway issue so that the.
So that they move in with more than just a dozer.
Right. Yes. They're aware. They've had some issues, but.
They're trying to be good about it, so.
Perfect.
Well, we're gonna.
Tell us this is how deep it is and that's how deep we'll put it.
Yep. That's mine.
Getting back to the Mike thing, so it's not just roll it in the ditch, cover it up, and then, oh, that's not right.
No, that, that shouldn't be a problem. I see they got locates called in over there on the Texas, uh, Finisher Farm. But we haven't gotten a driveway permit from them yet, so.
This is, yeah, any of them, and this one that we looked at that'll be down the road too.
Yeah, just treat all their projects the same, give them an elevation for the stake on it, stake an elevation.
That shouldn't be a problem. I know what we did in the past, we dug down to the clay line and we drove a hub in for them, but they still showed up with it.
Yeah, they said if you give an elevation, you tell us how deep you want it, and that's where we'll put it.
It's in the main road.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Moving on, it's 8:45. Motion from John Henry, that's for. You want those before you leave?
I'll.
Uh, we have a public hearing on easement, a county-owned land operated by Humboldt County Conservation. Any discussion there? We need to open public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Joey, your second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, open your public hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Okay, discussion on the easement. Can you get something, add to this?
The recent Horizon contacted us about installing a 250-foot tower on the corner park property. Beginning with, we were gonna have an access route off of our property. But it's pretty hard for us to control that. They need something available seven days out of the week. I'm not so sure that between our bend and the farmers bringing the equipment, that we'd, we'd be able to keep it seven days a week. So on the corner off of Montana Avenue, right there where those two chicken houses bred, there's, there's not quite enough room to put a driveway in there. And we'd put the driveway in on even this. I think, uh, county owes me a driveway. That was where it kinda started. But we need an easement because that, in fact, that one chicken house is, and I don't, was there long before I bought it. But it, it, it is bred on, on the property. I mean, there's no five foot or nothing. It's just on it. And then that area where you're talking, you, the county owns a hundred foot from the center into that property of ours. So we need, we need, we need about 10, 15 foot there to put this driveway in. And then there'd be a direct driveway into the tower so Horizon can service that tower without trying to come through our machinery line.
The Conservation Board has discussed this at, at a meeting, signed off, made a motion to approve, motion carry. So on their end, everything is fine, um, would not impact trail usage, trail maintenance, or really any future plans for that trail in any way, shape or form. So as far as the Conservation Board is concerned, we have no issues for granting the easement.
Sounds like everybody's in agreement. Other, other input this morning? I entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Joey, your second.
Second that.
I have a motion and second to close public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Okay, the next two items here, approve the resolution 2018-16 allowing execution of easement for Nielsen to the county on the county-owned operating, for the Conservation Department. Everybody understand what we're doing here?
Yeah. I believe I'll make a motion for the resolution 2018-16.
Motion by Rick.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry. Next item is authorize chairman to sign easement egress of the.
Ingress.
Get passed. Joey, here.
I authorize chairman to sign the easement for y, ingress and egress.
All right. Joey, your second.
Second that.
Motion by Dave, second by you. Other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry. All right. Thank you very much.
This also requires Kenny's signature. Do you want to sign it while you're here?
Thanks, Todd.
Todd.
Thank you, guys.
I'll call him.
Oh, you got one right there.
How many people have signed this in?
Usually one.
Good.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kenny. Okay, moving along down to bottom of the page, accept and place and file. The recorder's, recorder reports ending June 30th.
Let's move down to claims and get that.
Get your claims out. Okay, who's reviewed the claims?
I make the motion to approve the claims of $328,591.80.
I'll second that, but I want Rick to ask his question.
I got a question, uh, on the solutions. Is that a one-time bill for all the updates and all the computers?
It's all the software maintenance.
Is that one-time yearly?
One-time yearly.
Does it fluctuate?
Yeah, sometimes. I mean, it's not up by very much this year.
Okay, it's just always high then?
But, yeah. If you want to keep the software, you have to pay for it.
Oh, yeah. We're also getting a person for that.
Yeah, that's our, you know, maintenance, our, uh, managed care people that watch it and make sure that we're not having surgeons in. Yeah, we have a surgeon usage and they check in to see if somebody's trying to hack into the system. So it provides security and provides the software, right, everything we need to function.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the claims as stated for $328,591.80. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry. Now we go back up and accept and place and file the recorder's end of report. We'll get the claims done. Any concerns about the recorder's end of report? Recorder end of report?
Looks like it. I'd make a motion to accept and place and file the quarter, uh, recorder's quarterly report ended June 30th, 2018.
Motion by you. Go ahead, your second.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Those in favor, place and file, approving a quarterly report of the auder. Say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry. Okay, accept and place and file the end, auder's quarterly report. What do you got to say for that, Peggy?
Well, we didn't bring in a ton of money, but we did bring in some money, $555 of the device. Most of it was, um, a NACO reimbursement that I got. When I go to NACO, the IPEC board pays so much towards my expenses. So this was the legislative conference that I went to in February and was reimbursed by IPEC.
Joey, your motion.
I'll motion to approve the auder's quarterly report.
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, second by Dave to approve the auder's quarterly report. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry. Okay, we have a discussion and possible approval of Iowa Bible reading marathon to be held in the courthouse yard on July 14th. I think it's the second year for that, isn't it?
It's probably a third or fourth year.
Really?
They've been here several times. They do a great job. They're, they're a great custodian of the grounds when they're here. They bring their equipment in. Um, I think this time they didn't even ask for lights or anything. They're gonna do it just one day, starting at 7:14 in the morning and reading for just one hour. They make sure when they leave, everything's picked up, there's no trash around, there's nothing. They're a good group, so.
Good enough.
Last year, they sent an umbrella to over them, didn't they?
Yeah. Yes.
They've done that for many years or?
I think three or four now.
Three or four.
They do that in every county in the state of Iowa.
Yeah.
On the same date?
I don't think so.
Not always.
No, no, I didn't know what the protocol was, but no issues with any thing with that then.
Nope, not at all.
I'll make a motion to approve the Iowa Bible reading marathon for July 14th.
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, second by Dave to approve the Iowa Marathon Bible reading to be held in the courthouse lawn on July 14th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carry. Looks like we're at the end of the rope already. It's not even 9 o'clock.
All right.
I have a couple little things. Um, when the insurance was all billed out, even Marty's very good to us. They take it and they take the premium and they split it all out between the general fund and secondary road and conservation and everybody that's involved. And one of the accounts under there is the weed commission because they have their trucks and stuff. Well, they billed us for work month comp there and I called and talked to Scott because we don't actually have a body that's a county employee spraying weeds this year. We're contracting it out.
Right.
So I said, rather than have him try to allocate this back to all the other different funds, maybe I'd get the board okay to pay it all out of weed commissioner and then adjust it later. And he said, if you're not using that, we'll make an adjustment in the policy during the year and we'll give you a refund back. So then if we pay it just out of weeds, then the refund will go in eventually. And there is money allocated in there for insurance, you know, enough to cover that.
Okay.
But I just wanted to say it's $839 for the year.
So you're gonna pay that and they're gonna reimburse?
Yep, yep. And I told him I didn't know if this was gonna be a permanent thing, but I said for this year, we're contracting it out.
Okay.
So we don't have a county employee that we need to cover work month comp.
Right. That makes sense.
Yes, thanks for catching that.
Yep, good deal.
Maybe a buck for it.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep, that's why, that's why you get paid the big money, Peggy. Watching out for every dollar.
So I don't need a motion on it, just you're okay.
Just, yes, that makes sense. Good thing to keep track of.
Um, what else do I have? This one will be taken care of. Um, Kent had brought up, uh, some ideas through an email.
Saw that.
A question on, from another county who was having some issues with meetings. Wanted to ask you what your wishes are when we have work sessions and special sessions. Um, it's been a board policy, not policy, but a practice in the past to only schedule our regular meetings to be taped and shown on our YouTube channel. But it is entirely up to you. We can have every meeting that we have taped and be on the YouTube chat. So, um, I don't know what your wishes are. Do you want to think about it?
I think we're fine the way we are because we always publish any extracurricular.
Yes, we do that.
So no, you know, surprise or secret to anyone. I'd say we leave it as is and just keep the regularly scheduled board meetings on the YouTube, on the filming part of it. And obviously, any work sessions, uh, press is always welcome to attend because they're always published. Peggy does a good job making sure that they are.
Yes, yes.
If we had something after today, which we don't, it would say work session on, blah, blah, whatever. So I think we stick with the procedure.
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't see any reason to change it.
Because we do record them, right?
Yes. Well, we don't record the work sessions. We just do the, our regular work.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're fine where we are.
We'll continue with that.
I read that article that Captain sent, that you'd forwarded or got both. And I don't think we're in any violation of anything on our open records and meetings laws, so I think we're doing good.
And I think maybe there's some other issues there on, on other types of.
I think other counties have had things per that article, but I don't believe that that's us at this point. So I think we're doing a good job. You keep us on the straight and narrow, so that's good.
We will continue. That's all I have.
All right. Okay, I think we're ready for Kenny's report. Dave, you had your work today.
Okay, uh, Monday the 2nd, flags up at the courthouse. Tuesday, I met with, Eric and I met out to Hog Side on Delaware. Tuesday, uh, met with Eric and I met out to Hogside on Delaware with, uh, Iowa Select. Uh, Wednesday, we had the parade. I didn't ride with the guys, I was up front.
You were number one.
I'm number one. And Friday, we took the flags down at five o'clock. And we appreciate the radio station, the paper, and announcing that, they're giving us a little plug in there. We had help, we've done it with three guys and I think we had, uh, probably fifteen, so, you know, it works great. You get a lot of people. I confer. You can go up and back, you know, it feels up in a hurry and down in a hurry. And we're gonna have to replace some flags sometime, we're getting signed up pretty badly. That's what I got.
How many do you have? How many flags are there?
Hundred.
Hundred.
Got a hundred poles, a hundred flags went up, and we probably got a hundred and ten, fifteen flags.
Very nice.
We're gonna have to start. I'd say we, we taking care of the wrecked ones, but, uh, some of them are getting pretty painted, so.
What you got, Eric?
Uh, pretty solid today, I did help with the flags up. I confer, the more, the more, the merrier with people, it went really well. Uh, wasn't able to be here on Friday to take them down, but Dave said they had pretty good turnout for that. Yes, Dave and I met with, uh, representatives from the Iowa Select Company on Tuesday. Uh, we have information to share, but it, it was positive, I think, don't you, Dave?
Yeah, we was out there about an hour and it-
And Dave mentioned the driveway location and depth for, you know, so, there, you know, I say it was positive, uh-
We talked about the county tiled situation up there.
Yes, yep, Dave, and Dave and I had that information when we met and we made them aware. And they are gonna contact us prior to construction because there is a drainage district tile near that proposed site. And, uh, there were, you know, wanna make sure that that's located and there's no issues with that before construction, so. They're being a lot more upfront, if you will, and we don't just find about the, out about the site after they're built, so.
Sounds like they're trying to be good names.
They're, they're making us putting their, you know, better foot forward, I think. I mean, uh, due to, I think, a lot of public pressure, maybe a little bit of what we've done in this county, uh, but yeah. Dave and I thought it was a fairly positive meeting to, to keep things, uh, upfront rather than after the fact. Of course, when we had the Fourth of July parade on, the Fourth of July, and I say I was unable to take the flags down, but, uh, so that was about it, uh, this past week.
Okay, um, I was there for the parade on Wednesday, uh, Friday morning at eleven, I was now at Miller's Landing for Humboldt County Housing. Uh, they're still working on some duplexes and single family homes, two different sizes, um. They have a couple lots bought, they're gonna build, hopefully, like a model home on, so we can see what they look like. So, it's progressing forward.
Okay, I skipped last week, so I have to catch up. The twenty-sixth, we also had another housing meeting in twenty-sixth, but basically the same thing, looking for plans and so forth. The twenty-seventh, Peggy and I were down at Des Moines for ISAC meeting, basically going over business for the year, hey, you fill me in. And one of the things, we went over the agenda for August twenty-second and twenty-third, our annual two by, uh, ISAC conference. One of the highlights, we'll have the two governor candidates, Hubbo and Reynolds, both speaking on the first day. So, it'll be anything, back-to-back, so.
And for those of you who don't know, Marlon Hansen was nominated as the Golden Eagle Award for ISAC. He's been awarded award at the end of fall. That's quite an honor.
One of the three finalists, and he got the overall, you know. And you called the show, you're right?
Yes, yes, I'm ready, we're gonna call with you now.
Okay, moving on then, on Friday, I had second judicial meeting in Rector City, same old, same old. We got some money back last month, the last meeting, they talked about the State Pepper Fed Fund. We got a little money back, so they haven't reduced prices any people they thought.
What, what date was that?
That was Friday, the twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth, and that was which meeting?
The second judicial.
Second judicial, okay.
Then we had a daycare meeting on the third, and we got the place open, we're having a hard time hiring people. We got some volunteers working now, they think they have seventeen kids over there already. And we're planning to open until August, they open in July, so we got some. I think we're getting more interviews coming on, I think they're gonna be all right. Parade was Wednesday, and as Rick said, we had a housing meeting Friday morning. Anything else for the better group today? Nothing from media? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?